Welcome, everybody, to our special council meeting for April 14. Tonight, we're talking about our Committee of the Whole. We have regrets from Councillor Verbeek, and we have Councillor Garan joining us tonight by Zoom. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and we acknowledge that this land is the traditional territory of the Three Fires Confederacy of First Nations comprised of the A'Jibwe, the Ottawa, and the Potawatomi Peoples, and of the Hurunwenda Peoples. We value the significant historical and contemporary contributions of local and regional First Nations, and of all the original peoples of Turtle Island who have been living and working on the land from time immemorial. Any declarations of conflicts of interest from members of council this evening? Seeing none, and if you find yourself in conflict, just let us know. I need a mover and a seconder for the special council meeting agenda for April 14. Moved by Councillor Mayde and seconded by Councillor Maguire Blaze. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? And that is carried. I need a mover and a seconder that we move into the Committee of the Whole, and that our CAO Doug Sweet be appointed as the Presiding Officer of the Committee of the Whole, and that the Presiding Officer, as appointed, shall have discretion and authority to modify, relax, or amend any of the procedure bylaws currently governing council proceedings, except for, except as may otherwise herein by council. And further, that the completion of the Committee of the Whole, the special council meeting, shall reconvene, and the Presiding Officer of the Committee of the Whole shall then rise and report to council with any recommendations to council that were made by resolution of the Committee of the Whole. Needing a mover and a seconder. Deputy Mayor Shepley, Councillor Allard, and all in favor? That is carried, and welcome to your last Committee of the Whole, the A.O. Sweet.
Mayor Bondi. So, council, as with previous Committee of the Whole meetings, each agenda tonight may be discussed for up to 15 minutes. For each item, the councillor or mayor who introduced a topic will provide a brief summary, followed by any additional information or context from our administration as needed. Please note that tonight's discussions are for deliberation purposes only. Should council determine that further action is necessary, the item must be formally brought forward to a regular council meeting for consideration. So with that, the first item on tonight's agenda is CIP, Community Improvement Program, and McGregor, now is introduced by Mayor Bondi. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Mayor Bondi to provide a brief summary.
Sweet, this just came out before we were really hiring the consultant to do a review of our CIPs in our whole municipality. I guess just looking to see if there's any council appetite to include McGregor in our CIP area. I know there's not a lot of development opportunities there, and we've been told that, you know, the old hardware store is being turned into residential, but we have yet to see any action there. Just looking to see what we can do to get more action in McGregor, but it might be captured in the consultant's report.
Thank you through the chair. How, I think, I think before we can answer this is how many businesses are there? How many commercial spaces are actually in Essex? I know there's some commercial there, but we are split, Amisburg, Essex. So how many are on the Essex side in McGregor? Like, how many businesses would that benefit?
Do not quote me, unfortunately, Director Chadwick is on vacation this week. There used to be the Home Hardware, which is not operating, and I think behind you would have a Gonyal demolition or whatever they're working. Those are the only ones I am aware of. There could be more, but it is limited, for sure.
Further that, I think, I mean, we could offer it to McGregor. I think we would get Amisburg businesses asking if they could be a part of it as opposed to Essex businesses. I would like to see if there's two or four, let's say there's four, businesses in McGregor, if they wanted to reach out to Essex and see, I'm sure there's some grant available, or there's something that might not be the CIP, but something that we could do for them if they were interested in some kind of improvement. But for two businesses, I think our funds are probably, or are not funds, because I don't think they would be utilized. I think our efforts might be better in other areas of the municipality.
Don't see any other council questions, so if you bear with me. Director Chadwick did provide a few bullet points, and council's aware of these because she has been, she has brought them up. But I think for the public or the residents that are in the audience today. So this is information she's provided. So on April 7, we issued an RFP, Request for Proposal, seeking consulting services to complete industrial sector community improvement plan study. Prove an incentive-based program to track large-scale industrial development to the town of Essex. However, a review of the town's existing urban and rural CIP programs will also be required, including evaluating and providing recommendations for improvements or changes to existing programs and potentially introducing new programs. For example, brownfield developments, portable housing, and the consideration of new or expanded geographical boundaries of CIP areas. The RFP closes on May 7, and we hope to retain a consultant in the weeks after that. From that, a report will come back to council later in the year for information, decision, and the timelines will match our budget deliberations. So, to your point, Councillor Maguire Blaze, I agree with you, but this report may come back, and maybe not only the commercial retail-type business. There may be brownfield or different opportunities. We won't know until the consultant comes back. Okay, so we will move on then to our next topic. So the next topic is water loss amounts and potential reduction strategies, and that was brought forward by Mayor Bondi. And again, if you can provide a brief update.
Sweet, being on Union Water, I've been hearing a lot about water loss and how it impacts. Now, it'll impact, in the northern end of our municipality, it'll impact Union Water more so than than our costs. But in the southern half, it could still be the same. So I'm wondering if we have any idea how much water loss we are losing? And that's, you have a water in, water out, and how much we're losing in transition in the pipes, leaky municipal pipes, things like that. And if there's any way, you know, maybe we could have a quick talk about water meters, what their purpose is, and if we are looking to do water meters, or I just like to talk water.
I can, and we'll start with Director Juicewicz.
Thank you through the chair. So we've only recently been able to actually monitor and report on what our water loss is. So previously, E.L.K. was our contractor for water and wastewater billing. So we did not have access to the monthly reports on consumption. Now that it's in-house, we have all of that data. So this is the first year we've actually been able to say, this is the water coming into the system, and this is the water we're billing out of the system. So that's a really big enhancement for us. We did note in the Union Water Consumption Territory, our water loss was higher than we expected. It was in around a 12% mark. This could mean a variety of things. There was a lot of older meters that required replacing. I think just in 2024 alone, there was over 500 meters that we replaced. So why water meters are essential is they, the functionality of them ensures that we're getting accurate readings, right? And we're properly recording and billing the water usage that residents are actually incurring. So we do feel comf-, that also does not include fire hydrant testing. If you include fire hydrant testing, our water loss is in and around the 17% mark. So it is a touch higher. So we are working very closely with the Infrastructure Services Department on trying to make sure our data is accurate, making sure we have up-to-date meters in all wards, and really making sure that, we're also working alongside Union Water to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples, right? So kind of year one of the process, and the manager of infrastructure has noted that he'd like to see a 10% or lower amount of water loss. We feel confident with the meter replacements that we can get there, as well as making sure that our water system is upgraded when it should be. And I'll pass it over to Kevin Drard for anything he'd like to add.
Through you, yeah, I can build on that a little bit. So when we talk about water, I don't like the word water loss because it's not really a great representation of it. I like to call it unbilled water, so water that doesn't flow through the meter. So as Director Juicewicz mentioned, we have the two systems. We have the Harold Colchester Water System, and then we also have the Water System. So we do have a lot of control over the loss of water within the treatment plant, but everything else is purchased, right, from Union Water? The likely cause of any unbilled water would be leaky water mains and services. Leaky private infrastructure is a very common one. So the pipe that runs from the municipal right away to the home before it hits the meter, there's a lot of leaks like that. And if the ground is made of sand, it tends to just kind of drain away, and nobody sees it for many years until it starts to bubble up, get bad enough and bubble up to the ground. Theft is another large one. So people who have illegally tied into their water service before it hits the meter and to try and tie in sprinkler systems, fill their pools, different things like that is another very common unbilled water issue. As Director Juicewicz mentioned, we had backlog of water meters that needed to be replaced because of COVID. So during COVID, we weren't entering into homes. So that backlogged our water meters. Typically, a water meter, if it's not replaced by its life cycle, loses 7% to 12% of its accuracy. So we could lose 7% to 12% of our billed water just from the water meter. We also lose from fire hydrant flushing. So we flush our hydrants every year, so that takes water. So we, there's a little bit of water that way that goes unmonitored. And then we also have our fire department who like, who does drills and does things like that. So we have a little bit of water loss there as well, unbilled water. So there's various reasons and things that happen when we consider unbilled water. So there's a lot of reasons for that. There's quite, there's a lot of strategies to address them. So if you do a little bit of research on Google, there are a lot of strategies to address unbilled water. Most of them are extremely costly and very, they're not very economical for a small town, right? So if you're a big city, you can do condition assessments on your water, on your water mains, and it has very little impact on your water rates. Whereas the town of Essex only has, you know, 9,000 customers, it gets a little bit, it's more of a struggle to maintain 600 kilometers of water main and only have 9,000 customers. So, but some strategies that we, that we use is we replace old water mains. So we stay on top of our lifecycle strategies. So when a, when a water main needs to be replaced, we ensure that we're, we're changing that out to make sure we get ahead of those leaky services and leaky water mains. We do condition assessments where we can. So whenever we have a water main break, or we have an opportunity to inspect water, the water main, and we'll take a look at it. A strategy that we've used, obviously, Director Juicewicz mentioned it, is our water meter replacement program. So we had a record year last year, we replaced 585 meters. So that's a huge amount of water meters replaced in one year for a department of four people, right? So it takes a lot of resources to allocate to that. There's other ways that you can address unbilled water and pinpoint the location, especially when it comes to theft. It's the best way to do it is to create zones in your water system by monitoring how much flows through a meter midway through the system. If you, if you imagine it linear, like a big line, put meters along the way, and then you can kind of pinpoint your loss as it flows through the individual meters. Unfortunately, our system is not linear, so it takes a lot of meters to do that. And again, it's very, very expensive. But we are, I think, the key to this is to make sure that our meters are accurate because 7% to 12% puts us in that, that range where, where we are. And then, so staying on top and having those meters replaced, and then staying on top of our capital replacement program is also a very key piece to that. One other thing I wanted to mention, too, so ideally, if we could keep, get our water loss under 10%, that is phenomenal. That would be like a very well-operating system. Industry standard is anywhere between 10% to 15% is actually an industry standard to have for unbilled water. And that obviously changes from town to town, city to city. But to be in the 10% to 12% range is pretty good. So I would consider our Union Water System to be industry standard. We could always continue to keep up efforts to try and reduce it. But the, but our system in Harold Colchester is a little bit higher. So we have a bit more of a focused cast iron replacement program. So we're looking at increasing the funds that we're putting into replacing water meters in the Harold Colchester.
Any questions from any council member? Deputy Mayor Shepley.
Through you, just a quick question, and we've had this discussion before, Director Gerard. I know, like, in the town of Lake, in Lake Shore, I've got a water meter at a property there that if the meter runs all night long, I'll get a call, and they'll, they'll question if there's a problem there. I know we don't have that ability in Essex. That meter, though, is in the front yard, buried. So while not buried, I mean, I think they could get access to it. Where the meter's in the house, do you find that there would be less theft when that meter's inside the front lawn as opposed to in somebody's basement? I mean, is that something that, and the, the price of that meter compared to the meters we're using is probably quite a difference?
I mean, we have various different setups throughout town as well. So we have meter pits, which is exactly what you're talking about, which would be a meter in the front yard. And then we have, obviously, the more common one is in the basement of your home or in the crawl space. So I think it would reduce theft, maybe. I think it's the theory that locks on front doors are meant to keep good people out. You know, like, if you want to steal the water, you're going to steal the water. So I don't know if it would reduce theft necessarily. It would certainly make our lives a lot easier from an operational standpoint because we wouldn't have to get access to homes and basements and crawl spaces to change out meters. We could just do it in the front yard and have somebody out of water for five, 10 minutes as opposed to getting access, having our water billing team schedule an appointment, getting in there, changing the meter, cleaning up all the mess, you know? So it's, so it tends to be a little bit more time-consuming and an operational issue more than any.
I've, I've heard this a few times. I'm probably not the only member on council that's heard this, and it could be to do with changing the meters. But I have heard, and I've brought it up to administration, that since we have taken water billing in-house, some members of the public are seeing an increase in their bill, and I've always directed them to go to town hall to investigate. Can you please explain that it could have something to do with, if they get a new meter? Please?
Thank you through the chair. So what we found when we onboarded water from E.L.K. to the town operations is that if their meter was not working or malfunctioning for some reason, they were estimating the reads. So they were assigning the average consumption to that person's bill account, right? Which in many situations, their actual consumption was a lot greater than their estimate. So when the new meter was installed, we were getting accurate readings, and their billings were accurate, which were much higher than their estimates. Oftentimes, they even had a catch-up bill. So that was really the number one reason. But we encourage residents to contact our department. Now we have the staff that we can offer the level of service. We've had many phone calls where we dig into the history of the account. We will send a water meter operator out there to make sure that it's functioning properly, to make sure it's obtaining the right reads. If the resident wants, we can actually take the water meter and have it sent out for an accuracy verification to a third party. So there, there's many steps that we can take, and we encourage residents to call our department, and we're happy to sit with them and go through their bill history.
Any other council comments? Councillor Mayde.
You, Chair. Just on that, that further conversation there, have we ever done a study on the cost of those meters that are in the ground? Because, I mean, it does give some of our residents, you know, a little level up on service, too, if we're able to warn them after they're losing water, and they could save some money. And if it saves us on some operations, I don't know if it's, has there any study ever been done on the cost?
Comment on that. So what, so what we're talking about is an AMI system. So what we have right now is an AMR system. So it's an automatic meter reading system. So we actually, to collect all of the meter reads within the town, an individual has to have a laptop and a meter reading, and a meter reading, let's call it an antenna, in the truck, and they drive all of the roads in town to pick up all the meter reads. So that would be, and that's advanced technology still because people still actually go up to homes and read them, just like they used to do for gas meters. People still have that for water as well. The town of Essex doesn't have any manual reads, so we're all on the AMR system. So to go to an AMI system, what that requires is a continuous read of the meter. So instead of just that one time, once a month, driving around, collecting the meter, pickup truck, this is basically antennas that are set up strategically throughout the municipality, which is very challenging as a rural municipality, to catch all of the different homes in the rural network and all those with all the antennas, because they only reach so far. In my experience, when I was at the town of Lake Shore, we did look at an AMI system. They have began to implement that system. And that would have been six years ago now, and that was estimated over $4 million just to implement that system. And that didn't include any of the meter replacements to bring you up to the automatic read. Each antenna is around $30,000 to $40,000. So you're looking at, you know, multiple antennas. So we could look at a strategy to only include urban centers as a start or things like that, but very, very expensive. And I think Lake Shore is the most recent, and before that was the, was the town of Leamington, and I think they were in the $4 to $5 million range as well.
Director Juicewicz, last comment on this?
Chair, so we may not have the ability to be getting those automated alerts of high usage, but what we are doing now is on a monthly basis, before the reads are actually put into the billing software, our water billing clerks are scanning for high usage. And so if they notice something that is an anomaly, they're reaching out to the resident to say, looks like something may be wrong. And then we've actually implemented in our policy the High Water Usage Relief Program. So we will grant residents certain relief if they do have some sort of malfunctioning infrastructure. So it's just done manually.
Good topic and a good educational update. So with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is racism and harassment in our community. Now, it's brought forward by Councillor Maguire Blaze.
Thank you through the chair. So this was brought to my attention by some members of our community, some business members of the community. And I'm bringing it to council to talk about first because one of our strategic points is welcoming and caring community. And in that, we want to make sure that everyone has a sense of belonging. And we do have some new to, new to the area residents now, and it's, they're more popular. I don't, I don't know how to say it. But they're more prevalent. They're in our, they're in our businesses, they're working for it, they're working in our shops. Anyways, there has been some racism and harassment to certain individuals in the community. And how can we, as a council, as town, help our community members feel safe? Question I can't answer. Are there any tools in our toolbox that we could give to community members who feel that they don't belong, businesses that feel that they want to support their employees, businesses who want to address the situation to residents who are committing the harassment or the racist remarks? So just throwing it out there, is there anything, do we feel that there's anything that we can do? Is there anything in our toolbox? And how can we help our residents feel like we are an open and welcoming community?
You'll just kind of make a comment and open up to council and some administration. I think this is good timing to bring it forward. I think we've all kind of heard concerns, and one of our concerns is exactly what you said. What's in our toolbox as an administration, right? If something happens in a business, depending the size of the business, no similar to us, we go to our HR department, how we address it. So there are challenges like that. But I think as a municipality, we can try and be leaders somehow, right? Lead by example. As Councillor Maguire Blaze said, it's actually right in our strap plan. So council thought that was important, to be a small-field community, welcoming community. So Director Morrisette may have some comments, but I know, even recently with our signage at gateways, I think more, we've done some campaigns before, totally different, but just some examples of idling or different things, right? Maybe we start getting just campaign, just like anything, if it's more out there, people may be more aware what their actions are. Director Morrisette, any comments, additions?
Sure, yeah. So there are some things that we've done recently and over five to 10 years that have been in our toolbox. So the first one that we have is we are considered anti-bullying in our parks. So we do have signage at all of our parks to make sure that people know if there is bullying incidents, which this would certainly fall under that, that they know what the appropriate channels would be. So they would call, the suggestion on those signs is to call the OPP non-emergency line and communicate that with them. And of course, if it is some sort of emergency situation, then they should be calling 911, and the police would respond quicker. But for bullying incidents, we suggest the non-emergency line. We also have in our, within our facilities, code of conduct. So our staff on the front lines know that if there's situations like that going on, they're expected to intervene and notify the resident, well, potential resident, if they're in our facilities, that that's not appropriate conduct with our, within our code of conduct. The minor sports organizations all have to have their own code of conducts, and they monitor those things. So if we do know that there was an associated team or an organization that was involved in that, then we would certainly reach out to those user groups to let them know the behavior that's occurring. Some of the other things we've done, we do an annual pride raising for leg grazing ceremony each year, and we have done the gateway signage, which have a pride logo to show that we're a welcoming community. We also do staff customer service training several times a year to ensure that we will intervene in how to go about de-escalating those situations. We do community safety walks to build relationships with the residents and the OPP to gain a better understanding of the areas within our municipalities so that we're showing presence and they're aware of what's going on. And then we also do a number of town-hosted events and facilitate community events to help build that sense of community within the public. So we're trying to get out there and bring people together within my area, community services specifically.
Mayor Bondi.
You, CAO Sweet, I, unfortunately, I've heard this too, so I want to thank you for bringing it up. I think it's an important topic to talk about because I think we should have a zero tolerance for bullying in our community. It's hard to get out there and, when we're not there, or, you know, when the police aren't there. And just other things that we're doing is we have welcome packages at one of our pharmacies uptown. So when people move to the town, they know we're creating, we're trying to constantly create that sense of community, you know, getting people together for volunteering. Another thing that I've noticed at other town halls that I think we're going to have up at town hall, and it's another example of that leading by example, is like a code of conduct for council chambers. I've seen some really good code of conducts on my Essex County Library road tour. And I don't know if we can work with our communications to do more on our social media, more anti-bullying campaigns on our social media. And it could even, like, I'm not sure if there's months or themes or more days, we could really start to celebrate them at the town of Essex. I also just recorded basically an anti-bullying message on our phone system so that our staff are not experiencing bullying. And I think if, if residents are frustrated with things going on at town hall, the best thing to do is to reach out to a member of council and talk to them rather than bullying somebody online. There was a resident up here upset with a customer service rep the other day, and I actually followed them out. I listened to them, you know, upset for like 15 minutes. And then we came to the conclusion of, I understood why they were upset, and they understood that, you know, I'm one person, and our town staff don't deserve to be treated that way. So we still have a lot of work to do, but I want to continue and maybe see if there's something we could do on social media.
I think one action just from a brief conversation is, and I've been involved a lot of these things, but I don't realize how many things the town actually is doing, right? Director Morrisette mentioned it, Mayor Bondi, and I think we maybe, again, to be those leaders, we can do some things to really promote, we're doing this, copy us. I mean, we'll I mean, we'll leave it to our marketing to paraphrase that, but I think we can put those things out there to kind of get the messaging. A member that used to be for crime, right? See something, say something. Maybe if we get something going down those lines in terms of a campaign. Any other questions? Council Maguire Blaze.
Thanks through the chair. I appreciate the conversation and I think it's really important, especially, um, as our town is changing, as the face of our town is changing, um, that we continue that message and that we maybe share a little bit more often, the, the, uh, non-emergency, um, phone number for OPP. Um, so more people are aware of it that they can use that in the event of harassment and bullying, uh, that there is a tool that they can use and they're not defenseless. I think that's the number one problem. If they feel that there's nobody that they can go to, um, we, we want to welcome them into this community without, without new residents, um, Essex will just dwindle away. We need to be welcoming and we need, and we need those new faces and we need those new developments. I think it's really important and I, and I, I want them to feel safe. And I think that with some more social media and some more putting it out there that you can use this not only in the, in the playground, you can use this if you encounter it at no frills, you can use this if you encounter it on the, on the sidewalk. You can use this if you encounter it on Facebook. Um, I, I think it's important and I do want to be the leaders in that. And, and I think it's important for us to, to continue that message. And, and I thank you for letting us talk about it today and, uh, hopefully we can see some more. So thank you very much.
Sure. Um, when I read like the racism and harassment, I was kind of, kind of thinking like, um, uh, you know, education is usually a really good way of, of beating this and, and you know, a lot of times you're, you're afraid of what you don't know. Um, so I was just kind of wondering like, do we have any, um, groups that approach us for, um, maybe not a Canadian traditional holiday, but their traditional holidays and festivities, um, and for supporting them with that. And then, uh, also, um, are we looking at providing some programming and amenities for maybe some non-traditional activities? On the way here, I just heard that went to opening up a cricket pitch. Uh, they just got a million dollars for that. So, um, so, something like along those lines.
Through the chair. So we do have, uh, our flag raising policy, which is open to anybody. So if any groups are looking to do a flag raising, uh, ceremony, as long as it fits within the policy, um, we, we would obviously have a screening process to make sure it's appropriate and, and all that stuff and fits within the policy, but certainly something we can facilitate internally here. Um, same thing with our gateway signage. If it's, uh, some sort of messaging that would fit within that policy, then we can, we can do that. We've also worked with, uh, there was a group, it didn't end up working out, uh, for, for reasons on their end, but we were looking at a carousel nation that was looking to come into town a couple of years ago. Um, actually two different groups. So those are certainly some other, uh, things that we're able to work with if there's groups looking to facilitate. So they can reach out to us if, if there's events or programs that they're looking at.
The Council Geron, uh, just addition. I know Director Morris said has also be looking at cricket pitches in our area, right? I mean, as your culture and diversity changes, you want to adapt to that. So it is something we have in look. Counselor Geron.
Yep. Sure. Chair. Yeah. It's a problem. It's a problem everywhere. Um, there's two things with, with this, uh, with this topic. There's the, there's the, where do you report the problem? But there's also, how do we help? How do we help these residents deal with the, the trauma and the emotional scarring that comes from things like bullying and discrimination? So I know in a lot of the, the sports leagues and stuff and, uh, and the higher up associations, they, they mandate that all teams and stuff have preventative services officers. So do we have anything or is there any groups, organization around that offer those type of services that will help with, uh, with people who are, are having to deal with the after effects of, of the bullying and discrimination? It's a great topic.
Not aware and know what the town has, but it's something we can definitely look into. Um, and if there is something else we can promote, right? Some of the associations that can help individuals. Uh, Counselor Hammond will be the last one on this topic. Oh, sorry.
I, I was just, uh, curious as to, uh, how town hall is equipped with, uh, diversity and languages and stuff like that, which might, uh, might also be, uh, something to consider when, uh, especially dealing with some of our newer residents.
Yes. How are we equipped?
How diverse are our language capabilities as far as communicating, I guess is the question there.
Some of the staff, I'm not sure their backgrounds. Um, Director Mel and Drucel may not know, so I'll put them on the spot. I may have to do some research. But I know previously going back to the town, there was a number we had that if there was a different language, we could call for assistance for translation. So I'm not sure if that's still with our customer service reps.
I'm not sure if it's still with the customer service reps, but I do know that those facilities exist. Um, and if we were ever in that situation, we would, we would access those facilities. Yeah, they do exist.
Bonnie.
Today we talked about at the police service board meeting, we talked about, uh, the police are doing a QR code for Peely Island. Where you, and they said we could maybe do it here. So maybe we could make up posters for our business areas for the, the Harrow Chamber in the BIA and it, and it's like a poster and it says bullying stops here. And then the QR code is the OPP non-emergency number. So it just pops right up on your phone. So we could, you know, we could bullying stops here and the businesses can choose to put it on the outside of their window. And then also anybody walking up and down the street, you know, would see the QR code. I get asked all the time, what is the non-emergency OPP number? And I'm like, well, you could Google it. But having that message there with the QR code might be something we want to investigate and just starting, starting a campaign. It will cost us nothing to get flyers to our B, it's just time. It'll cost us time, which is money, but not a lot. Uh, to get flyers to our Harrow Chamber in the BIA. And if they want to give it to their businesses, then the businesses can each play a part.
With that, I think that's a good idea. As a town, we cannot force a business to do it, but similar to our winter control memo that's working with the BIA in the chamber, we can create, give it to the BIA and chamber and have them work with the business that are interested in that. So. Moving on, our next topic was Smith Road and adjusting municipal boundary. And that was brought forward by Council Hammond.
Yes, through you. Chair, uh, just, uh, this spring with the pothole issues and stuff like that, um, I just, uh, and Smith side road being, uh, the boundary between Amisburg and hair or Essex. Um, we get a lot of people from, uh, heroin Colchester traveling on the Smith. Um, it, some of those potholes can be dangerous. I'm just wondering if there's any room is to, uh, extending the border out to the county road on highway 20 and, uh, Howard. Um, uh, it seems like a, a logical way to uh, alleviate the problems of trying to do a dual, uh, coverage of this road. I'm just wondering if, uh, you know, if we can look after the road through the town of Essex, maybe, uh, incorporate a few extra homes on the Amisburg side. There's not that many really. But I just wondering if, if that's a possibility or whether we want to look at doing something like that, just to, uh, maybe better maintain that Smith side road, whether it's going to cost us, whether we get any return in it in the long run. I don't know. That's why I brought it up though.
So Director Chadwick provided some notes for this topic and I'll kind of go through that and then I'll turn it over to Director Gerard to kind of do an update on that road. So in terms of, of adjusting our municipal boundaries, municipalities can change their geographical boundaries through annexations or amalgamations. It can only be done for the following reasons. Accommodate future growth, combine resources and build capacity to realign a boundary that passes through or is adjacent to a road. So the process of changing municipal boundaries outlined under the municipal act and involves submitting a restructuring proposal to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And we need to include, among many other things, support from the described municipalities, so Amisburg, Essex and the county and any other relevant agencies. She does have a last point, the agricultural parcels on the west side of Smith Road in Amisburg are not required to accommodate growth or to combine resources to build capacity. Therefore, the only option would be a three above, which would be free line of boundary that passes through, it's adjacent to a road. So there's a process to do that, but I think it's also important that maybe if council has some history on why Essex maintains one road and Amisburg is the other road, uh, other half. Director Gerard, any addition in terms of that point?
So nothing on the annexation piece. That's definitely our, leave it to our, our expert in planning. Um, but from, uh, what I can say about Smith Road is that the town, uh, like we have a pretty decent relationship with Amisburg. We try and work with them wherever we can. Uh, the fourth concession is a good, a good example, just around the corner from the Smith. Um, you know, we kind of share that road a little bit with the town of Amisburg and, and through their grading program, it makes a lot more sense for them to grade that road. So they'll actually grade Essex's portion of road for us. Um, so we have a good relationship with them. Um, in terms of road, the care and use and maintenance of the road, uh, that's kind of where we differ a little bit, right? So I mean, we have a, what I would like, we have a pretty robust roads program. Um, so we basically take care of the east side of the road. They take care of the west side of the road and we basically split the road right down the middle of the road, like the center line of the road. Um, so if you go out there, you'll, you'll notice that, you know, both sides of the road need to be done. Um, we actually have it in our five-year capital schedule to complete the road. Uh, but before that, we have a bridge that needs to be completed over the Long Marsh drain. So that's also in our five-year capital program. But we've had the, the capability of taking that five-year plan and, and showing it to Amisburg and saying, hey, just giving you a heads up. We want to do this bridge. We want you to pay for your half. And when we're done the bridge, we also want you to pay for your half of the Smith, so we can do it together. Um, the bridge needs to be funded, um, half and half, but the road doesn't. So I mean, we'll try our best to work with our municipal partners to do the whole road at once to have a good level of service for both our residents. Uh, however, if the road needs to be done and Amisburg's not willing to kick in or can't, can't fit it into their schedule, we will complete our half of the road. Um, again, we have a, we have a robust program. We have a certain level of care and standard in, in the town of Essex and we're going to maintain that on that road. Um, so that's, that's all I can say about that. We have, sorry, actually one more thing. Um, we did, we have been trying to work with Amisburg on a road user agreement as well, which could kind of spell out the terms and, and agreements on that. In history, historically, we've had a lot of difficulty entering into an agreement like that because it ties the hands of each municipality, maintaining that road. Um, what are the triggers and different things like that? So this, this goes back to even, uh, the previous director of infrastructure services, so well over 10 years. Um, we, we are going to try and respark that conversation as part of the, the bridge and the road works in hopes that they may be willing to work with us on an agreement, but we can't guarantee that at this time, but we'll, we'll, we'll continue to work on that.
With the county road rationalization coming up, do we have the opportunity to work with the county and say this road really should be a county road?
Through the chair. So I, in my experience with the road rationalization study, I would say that this road probably wouldn't fit the criteria to be looked at. I'm not saying that we couldn't have it looked at. Uh, we could work with our, with our county partners to see if this is something that they're willing to, to look at. Um, but based on the traffic connection to Hamlets, that type of thing, the, the criteria that make a county road, I would say that this would, would still fit a local municipal road.
Counselor Mady.
Sure. Um, so I was going to ask if there was any way that we could, um, fix the road and then, uh, get our money. Uh, but it sounds like, it sounds like that, that's not going to work out. Um, the other thing is like, is there any way though, that we can like leverage the province if Amisburg's not keeping up their side of the road? Um, even then emails as recently as today. Like you said, our robust program does a great job. We go out there, we try to do the cold patch on it. If that doesn't take, we put up the bump signs. Um, almost nobody ever complains to me about our side of the road. Although last year I had people coming to me that lost their oil pan because the bumps on that, on the other side of the road was so big. Um, and the scars are still on that road. So I don't know if there's some leverage that we can do that say, hey, your road is really bad and it's causing some unsafe for our residents.
Care, uh, there's no mechanism that I'm aware of through the province. What I, what I would say is that, you know, at all municipalities have to adhere to, uh, Oreg 588, which is our asset management reg. Um, this is an existing road. Uh, we're all supposed to be finding ways to, to fund our existing assets and, and replace them and come up with lifecycle strategies for them. However, the legislation doesn't, it, it does allow the flexibility to council to decide which roads and where their priorities exist. Um, and most municipalities are underfunding their asset management plan, including the town of Essex, which, which council will actually receive, uh, uh, actually this coming Tuesday at the April 22nd meeting, um, is an update to our asset management plan. So there's no mech, formal mechanism through the province. Um, but, uh, but yeah, again, all we can do is, is be good, good neighbors and try and communicate uh, on what we plan to do into the future to allow them equal opportunity to try and do their part or to try and take advantage of some economies of scale, but we can't force their hand in any way.
Are there any other questions, comments? Okay. Thanks everybody. We'll move on to our next topic. Dog tags, pros and cons brought forward by Mayor Bondi. And we also have our deputy clerk, Ms. Brown here for other questions.
You chair sweet. I wonder if Ms. Brown can go first.
Ms. Brown. And Drew Klow.
CEO, C O suite through the chair. Um, Deputy Clerk Brown is going to go through the five essential reasons why we advocate for the dog tag program. But one of the things I wanted to say before she spoke, because I know she's not going to say this. Um, but she does a great job at dealing with this program. And I think it's one of the reasons why we can actually maintain this program in the town. And I think it's one of the reasons why some other towns can't maintain a program like this. Is because our deputy clerk does a great job with it. So I'll let her take over and let's think about it.
Thank you, Director Mel and Drew Klow. I did not pay him to say that. All right. So, uh, as, as he had said, I do have some, um, five essential purposes, but first I just want to say the program provides ea, uh, easily accessible vital contact information and the information provided is typically more up to date. The tags provide a physical indication on the collar to the, to others that your dog is not a stray. So if animal control needs to be called in, it indicates that. Um, additionally, the annual fees, as I was, will explain indirectly reduce taxes by offsetting animal. When a dog is lost and found by a stranger, they likely do not own a microchip scanner. And it is not always within their capabilities to drive a lost dog to the vet's office or to a shelter to access a microscope or microchip scanner. The dog tag program of Essex allows for anyone to call the town and help quickly reunite a lost dog with its family. This occurs at least six times a year. Because the dog tag program prompts owners to renew their information each year, the contact information is more up to date than a microchip that can easily be forgotten over time. This can lead to confusion and delay if the dog, if the dog has changed owners or if the owner has moved or changed their condition. Owners in Essex can easily update their information each year by using the biolo system online. The tag provides a clear visual indication that the dog has a home, but is simply lost. This differentiates it from a stray who may need more professional intensive care, such as support from animal control. The visual indication is especially helpful if the dog accidentally breaks the skin of another dog or a human. The small annual fee requires, required by the dog tag program of Essex supports efforts to offset animal control costs, indirectly reducing taxes to residents. It assists in animal control as it often provides our officers with a quick reference to who the dog belongs to and where it resides. Also avoids pound visits, allowing the dog to be reunited sooner while reducing administrative fees and animal costs and indirectly taxes.
Mayor Bondi.
Ms. Brown for bringing these items forward. I've, I've been on council now for a while. I feel like a broken record saying that, but I have, and I was on the dog pound for three terms, quite a while. So one of the, this is, and this has been a reoccurring question and it's been often asked on social media since other towns have done away with their dog tags. So I thought this was like a really good, uh, topic for today because everybody always likes to talk about animals. So one of the things is I'm wondering if we could put some of your answers on our website. So that when council members get asked, we can say, here's this link, here are our reasons why. Not to say in the future, if council wants to change this and do away with dog tags, we have to know that there's going to be an additional levy coming up on our taxes that will help, that will be paying for animal control. I kind of use it as similar to, um, using an arena. When user groups use the arena, they pay for ice time, but they don't pay, the, the amount that they pay for the ice time doesn't cover the entire expense of the arena. We're still subsidizing it in some form. So it, it is kind of, um, a more fair system in my opinion than municipalities that don't have dogs because if in the perfect world, no dog would ever get out. And we would not need an animal control catcher and, and we would not need a pound, but the reality is, is But the reality is, is every single person I talk to says their dog never gets out and their dog never uses the pound. Well, how come we have so many dogs in the pound? That the town of Essex, and this is something we need to work on, I think with public education with our residents. The town of Essex is smaller geographically and smaller by population than a town of Lake Shore, yet we have more dogs. So something's not working with our residents here and they're letting, they're letting too many dogs at large. So the other thing that, um, that I don't know if you touched on, I don't think you did, is back when Donna Hunter was in our finance department, we weren't having enough uptake on dog tags. So what we did is she brought a report to co- to council, looking at cost recovery to hire commissioners. So commissioners would go door to door and literally if they heard a dog knocking, they would try to sell you a dog tag. And if you, and if you said you had no dogs, they would come back later. So, and that was pretty, we've done that twice, I believe, since I've been on council. So there's, we have a pretty accurate database on, on the amount of dog tags we have. And I understand people lose their pets and, but sometimes dog lovers get another dog because they love dogs. So we've done the commissioners door to door, so that's built up our database really well. And, uh, there, there may be some tweaking that we could do in the future, you know, I think we have done some. Um, at, at first we did, um, you know, there was a one price for a fixed dog, one price for an unaltered dog to encourage residents to fix their dogs. But that ended up being a lot of work for staff because they had to ask for proof from a vet that your dog was fixed. So now it's a flat fee. The other thing is, you know, I'm going to one dog, one tag for the life of the dog, you know, that's a good move. I just really wanted council to be aware of the success of our program compared to other municipalities, such as Lake Shore and, and I know Lake Shore for sure, I'm not sure any others, but just we were able to collect a lot because of the work we've done, especially with our staff and also with the commissioners, which was not popular, by the way, it wasn't popular, but it was effective in getting some of that money for animal control.
Mayor Shepley.
So a couple, I've got no, no issue with the dog tags. We have a little doggy and we buy our tag every year. One, a couple of questions I had, one was, uh, when a, when a pet passes, the only way they, they let the update in the Milo system, then they wouldn't get automatically billed for that dog tag. So thank you for that. Um, one of the questions I've heard repeatedly, and I mean, it may sound silly, but it's a question that get asked by all the dog owners is, how come the dog owners are, uh, penalized with the dog tag and the cat owners get away free? And yet we have a span neuter and trap and release program that the taxpayers pay for. That was one of the questions I wondered if, if there's ever been any, any thoughts of, uh, a cat, uh, tag program.
Good chair to Deputy Mayor, uh, Shepley. So the intent of the dog tags is to offset the cost of animal control for dogs as well as the Lake Shore dog pound. So separate and apart would be the cats. Um, that is not funded through the, the dog tags. The dog tags is to offset animal, uh, the animal control officer, which we historically we call, um, the dog catcher and the Lake Shore dog pound. Um, I know that there has been some discussion about the cats. Uh, I don't know that that's ever gotten anywhere and that's something that the staff at this point could manage.
Um, so just so I know which, which group this, the, the money goes to. When I call animal control because there's a distempered raccoon, is that the same animal control that goes after the dogs?
Counselor Medley, uh, yes, it is. Yes, we pay a, a, a flat fee, uh, for, uh, there are some, some provisions for which that the animal control officer can charge us a trapping fee. So that can be over and above what the original contract or the base contract is.
So I wonder if there was any thought, so animal control should still really be a town responsibility because we're taking care of all the animals. Uh, maybe we could get an uptick if our dog licensing fee went to dog amenities. Everybody wants a dog park, everybody wants new stuff put into a dog park. So maybe instead of trying to subsidize something that should be funded, um, we look at using that money to, to make people want to buy a dog tag.
Yeah, I was going to go a totally different way and try and get the town to go into the microchip. Because if you're a good dog owner, you might trip it and you might get tripped for life. And once the dog pound gets the, they scan it and when they get the dog, they scan it, they call you, the dog's home before supper. We have too many dogs going to the dog pound and staying there for many days. So this was, I thought hopefully it could have been something that we could have looked into. But if the tags are working for what the town wants it for, then I'm all for the tags. Thank you.
Thank you through the chair. Um, I, I hear what Counselor Allard is saying and I kind of agree. Um, but in this way, why, if the dog, if the owner can prove that the dog is chipped, why do they need the tag? So I'm going to use an example, my dog is chipped and she has a pretty little thing that says her name and her address. Um, and she has the town's dog tag. I hate that because everywhere you go, she's like clink, 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 and it's a little bell. So, um, oftentimes, um, I won't have the dogs, this town's dog tag on her. Someone came and knock in, I would have it readily available, but, um, is there a process where if they were chipped, they wouldn't need to pay? And I understand that now that you talk, that might be too much. It might be too much for our administration to go through and make sure that all the, all the dogs are chipped. Um, but I do think that it is an option. I also do think cats should be chipped and I'm wondering, not chipped, cats should be tagged. Uh, if you'd called the dog or the animal control on a cat, would they come and pick that cat up? And then if they do, what happens to the cat?
Counselor McGuire Blaze, so it depends on the cat. Um, and, and within the contract, animal control will respond to injured cat, for injured cats only. So if there's a, a critical injury, the animal control will go pick up the cat and ensure that it receives proper medical care.
Thank you. And then further through to that, um, when it comes to, this is, this is my, my opinion. Um, I feel like dog owners like myself are treated a little unfairly than cat owners. Um, cat owners let their cats out, they're, they are in gardens, they're pooping in sandboxes. Um, they make a mess in, in garbage bags and put garbage all over the ground. Um, most, most dog owners, so we've had six, you said, so six times a year, we've had to use the services. Um, most dog owners aren't doing that. They're not off, you don't, you don't see a lot of dogs running around loose. Uh, so it's not quite, it's not quite fair. Um, I would like to see a program where you could catch the cats, bring them to a facility and they could be adopted out or whatever they need to be done with the cats. Neutered and trained. Um, neuter, other than going to Mayor Bondi's, uh, backyard sanctuary. Um, it would be nice if there was a place where you could go take the cats, they could be caught and brought somewhere else. And then if we had to, to do a dog tag, if they weren't chipped, then that money would go towards dog parks. I love that idea. I think that's great. And I would like to see those, those owners of the dogs who are just running around, those owners are charged the entire fee to send the dog catcher. I'm sure there's a fee associated, it's two hundred dollars to send the dog catcher out to go pick that dog up and bring him back. And then they're charged per day the dog is there. And if at the end of the three days, they're not there, the dog gets adopted to another, to another family and then what the town is billed. But you have to go and pay that fee before you get your dog back. I don't know. That's my opinion.
Just before I go to Mayor Bondi, at our last meeting, there is discussion on this topic. Um, good discussion on our topic, a lot of the finances, what's going to be subsidized. So I will ask that our clerks, maybe before budget deliberation, kind of look at different scenarios, right? If you have the licenses, where the money goes, so council can actually see what your options are in terms of dogs, the cats, funding dog parks, whatever that may be. Okay, Director Melandrulo.
Chair, just one quick thing that I wanted to mention, and then I'm going to, I'll, I'll propose something for the future as well, but our problem with cats have to do with feral cats. Um, not owned cats, right? Because I think the, we, we live, we live in, in a, in a more, in a, a first world country where dog, feral dogs don't exist. Right? But feral cats don't propose a, a problem to individuals like a feral dog would. So what happens is, is we have colonies of cats throughout the municipality that we're trying to deal with. So those aren't owned cats that are actually causing the problem. A lot of our time and resources as far as cats go are unowned cats. So it's, it, it's, it's like, it's a community issue. Dogs are not a community issue because we've taken, there, there are no feral dogs. We've taken care of that in this country. I've been, I've been to Ukraine where feral dogs are, are, are a problem. It's a community problem. But here it's not. So the, the, the cats, the, the, the money that goes towards cats are not going towards individuals who own cats. It's, it's more towards the community problem of cats. Um, and my proposal is that i- in the future, our department comes back with some, uh, another report to talk about how animal control is, is being taken care of in our municipality and get council's response on whether or not they agree with what we're doing.
Mayor Bondi.
There's, there's trap neuter adopt and there's trap neuter return. So trap neuter return is the feral cats, you know, the only option for them is fixing them so they don't breed anymore, putting them back where they are. And, and it's, we also in our animal control bylaw, it's illegal to relocate cats or anything. You can't trap a raccoon and drop it off at a farm. You can't, you can't just say, I don't want this cat, I'm going to drop it off at this barn, even if it's fixed, it's not allowed. That cat will spend its whole life, unless you train it to live in that barn, that cat will spend its whole life trying to get back to where it originally was. So it's not humane. But there's a couple of things I'd like, and when we come back with this report, I would like us to experiment with voluntary cat license. Voluntary, putting it out there to the animal community, the people that love cats that want to come to town hall, get a voluntary cat license. It could be a piece of paper and then that twenty-five dollars goes back into vouchers. So because people, this has been a very common question, I, I agree, cats should not be outside. They should not be outside for the life of the cat. They should not be outside for our wildlife, our songbirds, our, our, all of our creatures outside. They have an advantage on all of our animals out there. So I'd love to work to get less cats outside and maybe a voluntary license where it's kind of like, hey, I went to the town of Essex, I got a voluntary license and that money is directly going into, um, uh, into the spay and neuter. People that love cats, love cats and they want to help cats. Um, as much as, so, um, and also we should at some point talk about, people can call town hall, they can contact one of our trappers who can try to trap the cats, fix the cats. If you have a friendly cat out there, I, we built a network now with some pet stores that we can get those friendly cats. If it's a friendly adult cat out to homes, we just, uh, we just need to, to work on that. So more to, good conversation.
We will go to our next topic, which is council meeting updates for the public brought forward by Counselor Allard.
After, uh, watching the other municipals, Kingsville and Lake Shore, their, council meetings, I want to put an update on social media so that people at home can read what happened at council. If they're not watching videos, they wanted just get an update and something like that, just to keep more informed with the community.
Thank you. So I'll just make some comments and then kind of open it up to, uh, council for further comments. So then one of the challenges in comparison you have, it's a staff resource for us. So right now what the town does offer is, uh, just starting in 2025 specifically for council agendas. You can register to subscribe, right? So every Thursday they'll automatically go be an email for the agenda. We have two local papers, a lot of municipalities may have one, but we have two local papers that cover it. We actually have the live feed and after the feed, they could go back to our website, call it up and watch the video. Those are things we are doing. The challenge we have is truly staff resources to do that. We have one individual from our clerk's department comes here and you can see they're running the screen. So if we were going to look at doing this, not saying it's a bad thing, but it's a level of service and we'd have to look at additional cost for the staff to be here. So that, that's been our challenges, but, uh, open to other counselors thoughts, comments. Um, we try and make the best we can by giving the residents some ownership as well too. Here's what we do offer. See, you can see what's happening. Um, but I'll open up to any other council members.
Thank you through the chair. Uh, great, great question, Counselor Allard. Um, I too myself saw this on Facebook, Pete, residents are asking for a summary. Um, so two, two council meetings, I attempted to do a summary. No joke, while we were in it, I was doing brief notes. My summary was eight pages long. I don't know how we, we ourselves and even our administration could stay so biased to keep it at just the facts. I can't. So I don't know that it can be done unless you were just looking at our meeting minutes. But I, I feel like our meeting minutes come out fairly quickly. And the Essex Free Press does a fabtabulous job in summarizing everything that happens. So we could do it, but I feel like there's already so many other resources out there and all they have to do is wait three days. So can we do it and get it out for the very next morning, eight AM? We probably could, but is it worth our time and the money to do it? And I don't think that it is because if they were really interested and they needed to know the information by eight AM, they should watch our council meeting. And if they can't do that, then I think that they can wait three days and read about it in the Essex Free Press that's free to everybody. That's my opinion, but great, great, uh, conversation.
Through the chair, um, yeah, I have no qualms with, uh, people going out of their way to get, uh, council minutes, uh, the, the papers do, do a great job and it's a opportunity to increase, uh, paper sales as well as, uh, get to re- get a lot more, uh, local information. So by all means, uh, I think we're above and beyond with what we provide and how we, uh, get our word out there. And, uh, if they gotta work a little harder and go to the corner and get a paper, then let them.
We did, it's a really good conversation. I did see it on Facebook several times and I do like the county of Essex. If you're watching and you want the update from the county, the county does a really good job. They have a lot more staff. So we do run lean here in Essex and we do, out of all of the other local municipalities in Essex County, we do have two local papers that follow along our politics quite a bit. And if you read the local papers, you, you pretty much have a really solid understanding of what goes on. You can also reach out to the Coldchester Matters Group because they send before and afters a lot. So subscribe to them. They, they, uh, they do a good job as well. Um, the other thing is I've started really watching and, and the town of Kingsville did a thing where you can sign up to get the agenda sent to you. So that was something that we did. Now I'm looking to see, you know, is it matching up with our special council meetings? Are residents getting it in time? I know Counselor Medley's asked the question, can we back up council meeting? Um, so that residents have more time because I do, it is kind of grimy. If you have anything going on the weekend before a council meeting and you have a heavy agenda coming out and, and then you work Monday, I don't, this is my full-time job. But if you work Monday, I can feel how it's really tight to get everything done. The other thing I, I would love us to do a little bit more of, and I've talked to, uh, staff here is putting on Facebook when our meetings are. For example, I created my own special council meeting notices because I didn't see those on social media. So anytime that any member of the public has any feedback, we've also recently done on our website, a contact us that, that isn't just for budget. So we've done all of these little things. You can, you can contact us and tell us how you're doing, how we're doing. And it doesn't just have to be budget related. So, um, and it's a two-way relationship. Residents, you know, we have, we're here, we're out there, subscribe and follow along, you know, um, residents do have a duty to pay attention themselves as well.
Yeah, uh, that the, not backup council meetings, just have the agenda released a little bit earlier. Um, but yeah, no, for sure, dude. I think that'll help to be able to give us, um, I think this is a great, great topic. Um, my question is like, kind of like how? I think it's great, like, like for sure, we should, we should get a summary out to the public and we have uh, two newspapers that are doing summaries. We, uh, we have our minutes that come out and, and still, you know, you get the question, somebody wants to have something more. And, and I don't know how to give them something more. Um, like, I think that's the question, right? Is, is there, is there something that we're not using? Is there a tool that we're not using? Does our director of communications maybe have an idea? But how can we get that out to somebody?
Yeah, I think Counselor McGuire Blaze has mentioned, sounds like the residents want it faster. I've talked to our director of communication, my initial points were from him, actually, these are things they've done, right? Direct emails, uh, videos, so, um, it is, it's to get it out immediate, it's that staff resource to do that. But in a couple of weeks, I may have free time, I'm sure I will watch council meetings all the time. Okay, thanks. Good topic. We'll move on to the next one, AMO delegation suggestions. I have Mayor We'll move on to the next one. AMO delegation suggestions. I have mayor Bondi's name there. It's more me, but I put her name. So we're coming up that time of year. AMO is in August and anticipate later this month or beginning of May, that we send out what delegation requests. Um, we may have. So we are always able to add for three delegation requests. So throughout the last 10, 12 months, I've been tracking what council says, maybe this could be an AMO topic. So right now what we have is land lease properties, school road bus stops and criteria and the cost to municipality. Short-term rentals taxed as business. Let you know, we have gone twice. We submitted that and denied twice to present to the, as a delegate. High-speed internet in rural areas. So how we expand rural broadband. Uh, move over legislation similar to what tow trucks have for utilities, right? That was one. Collect DCs for AD use. Disaster relief or interior program. So when we had the flood, we went through the province, that program, um, last meeting, you saw the stats from that. So it was very hard for some of our residents to actually get a benefit from that program. Funding for Canard River cleanup and other major drain projects. Look for provincial funding to assist in getting drains done. So those are what you've brought forward. So I'm not sure if there's additional topics or from these topics, which you may feel is a priority. I know as we get closer, we'll probably send this list out again and to our priority lists, but that's why I wanted to bring forward other topics. Now that you can think of it, if not send to us, that we can keep the list going.
That's a really good list. I'm just going to peek at it a bit. I, I really think, um, they're all good. All of them are good. So maybe when it gets closer, we send it out and then we vote on our top, you know, whatever, and then it comes back and we build consensus that way. One of the things that I think i- is really important is the disaster relief program. Uh, I'm not sure. I'm not going to quote it right now. I think we had 22 applicants giving away $90,000. So in my opinion, that was, that was a big, uh, failure. Um, you know, we thought that this disaster relief program was going to solve many of our problems and it probably didn't even pay for our director's time. So that's one of the ones, the land lease properties. More to come on that one. We have a notice of motion, but I think that land lease properties is a big one as well. I also think that, um, I want to start making this list even bigger and bigger so that we can just, even if we have those elevator conversations, for example, one is, um, having, um, return deposits on more things like pop cans. So if we have a return on a pop can, then they're less likely to be on the side of the road. Um, all of those, anything around environmental and, and litter. Thank you.
Other council members topics, the top of your head, I know you may not. Councillor Maydees?
Uh, not so much a topic. Um, well, maybe a little bit of a topic too, but I've heard of other areas that get together. So almost like a county and they have like a Queens Park week, uh, where they work on getting their own delegations and they go up to Queens Park for the week and they, um, because some of these issues like, yeah, very important ones, the disaster relief. And that affected so many people here, not, not only in Essex, but in Kingsville and Amisburg. Um, like, you know, that was, that was a massive storm. It was horrible. And I think something like that could, we could maybe get a little bit more of a regional, um, approach. And then, you know, if we have a, a Queens Park week or something like that, that we set up. Um, so maybe we could look into sending, sending, sending something like that and.
Any other council members? Seeing none, but as mayor Bondi said, we'll keep the list ongoing and not only for AMO, right? For anybody that goes to Roma, we'll have a list. So whenever we have an opportunity to get in front of a minister, we'll actually have a list of some items. Okay. Moving on to our next topic is how residents receive and pay tax bills. Uh, Mayor Bondi? Director Drucevich first.
Through the chair. So currently the town of Essex, we issue two tax bills, an interim tax bill, uh, which is due in February and April, and then a final tax bill, which is due in July and October. The interim tax bill is 50% of the prior year taxes and the final tax bill includes any uh, increase to taxes that council may have approved. So currently, uh, we, uh, accept e-billing. So if a resident wants to sign up and have their, uh, bill emailed to them, um, we actually encourage that, given the postal strikes that we've gone through. So this guarantees delivery of the tax bill. Uh, because within our tax bylaw, which will be presented at the April 22nd meeting is the fact that regardless of whether you receive your tax bill, you're still responsible for payment of your taxes. Uh, that's crucial because we rely on tax money to operate obviously as a municipality. So in order to guarantee that we have sufficient funding for winter control, sufficient funding for infrastructure, uh, for operational wages, uh, we need to make sure that we have the cash flow to do so. Uh, so if a resident does not pay their tax bill on time, there is a penalty of 1.25% per month. Uh, recently, uh, we've introduced a new payment. Uh, press release actually went out today at 1:30. Uh, the payment portal is known as My Essex and what it will do is allow residents to pay with a credit card or EFT from their bank on this new online portal. Uh, it's sort of has an Amazon feel to it where you can just add your outstanding bills to your cart and make a payment all at once. It also will allow for payment of your water and wastewater bills. Uh, and so that actually goes live on Wednesday. Residents will also have the ability to view their bills online through that portal. So it's definite enhancement for residents. We're looking forward to it. Um, and I'll answer any questions that might come up.
Mayor Bondi?
I think sometimes residents expect us to have all the bells and whistles of larger municipalities. And I think we've done a lot in a short time as well, taking water billing in-house is, is one thing. So I did get a question today and she may be watching, so I just want to read it. Uh, just a question in regards to the meeting and property taxes. Why is it that if we pay our bill early, we do not get a reduction in the amount we pay? But if we are late even by one day, we are charged interest for a late payment? Just a simple question as some people struggle to have enough money to pay for bills and during this time of the year. So I think you've answered it that we have bills to pay. Um, can you explain the process, please? If people overpay their taxes and how they'd have to, say they estimating it's going to be this much, they put $600 on their taxes and it's only 540, what they would do if they wanted that extra money back?
They could contact our tax department at extension 3050. And what they could do is request a refund on their account. They could also request to transfer it to, uh, their water account if they had outstanding amounts there. Um, there is a small fee because obviously there's an administrative process with issuing a check. Um, then there's costs associated with that. Um, and it is very resident benefit driven. So that's why there is a fee associated with that. I think it's around $29 for that.
Through the chair. Um, just a quick question on that. You said that through the My Essex, they can pay by credit card on, uh, for their tax and water. Is there a fee attached to that as well? Cause I know there was one if he came in. So I know it's going to be a question that we're going to get out.
There is. I believe that the fee is 2.5%. Um, the fee is direct from the provider. So the town does not receive any of the revenues from the fee. It is, uh, PayIt, who is the third-party provider who receives that. And there's also a base amount, I believe of a dollar 50 per transaction on that, a, a little bit lower for EFT. I'm going to confirm in the press release right now.
Okay. Thank you for that. So I know, I know without mentioning that, we might get a bunch of people rapidly paying their, uh, bills and then realizing there's a fee for it. So thank you for clearing that up.
Thank you through the chair. Um, so I am one of those residents who has always said their taxes paid by the bank. And I just recently switched my mortgage and switched my bank. And now I am having to pay it myself. And I was shocked when I received my tax bill and I had eight days to pay it. Um, is there any way that we could get our tax bills out to residents sooner? So they are, there is more than eight business days to make that payment.
Very valid. Um, definitely experienced it across all residents this year with the mail delays. So, um, we strive to get the mode as soon as we possibly can. We rely on MPAC's assessment upload, right? So, so as soon as we get that assessment upload from MPAC, we can start our billing process. Um, we always make sure we meet the mandatory deadline of 21 days prior. It's in the mail. Um, we'll try our best to, to get it done as soon as we can, but we are waiting on an external party to, to get their data to upload into our system. Um, but I can definitely relay that feedback and try to get them out as soon as possible. Um, and if, uh, if we find that there are severe delays, I think what, what I can do from administrative standpoint is bring it forward to council. Um, and we may consider maybe periods of, um, penalty free, if the, especially if a postal strike comes again in the spring, right? And we have a lot of residents, uh, coming forward with that type of feedback. Just, uh, one point of clarification while I have the mic. Um, the convenience fee is actually 2.35%. So I'm just going to correct myself, 2.35 and a dollar 50, um, per base transaction.
Thanks through the chair. Um, so I'm just wondering, uh, with this new program, I know the town of LaSalle, you can sign up and you can actually get your tax bill online along with your water bill. Is that something that we're looking to do as well? Where not only can you pay it online, but you can get an account, you'll get an email and that email will say your tax bill is now available on your account. And you can go online and then you have the full 21 days. I mean, having that in place would help, especially in the event that a postal strike, and honestly, that postal strike happened how many months ago? And the mail is still so behind. Um, so I think that that tool might be something worth looking into if we're not already doing it.
So that is one enhancement. So residents will now have a PDF link to their bill. Um, so again, as mayor Bondi alluded to, unfortunately, they do charge, the software companies do charge pretty large amounts for customizations. So the one, uh, unfortunate thing is that, uh, e-bills right now, which are received first. So as they get the 21 days that hits your inbox right away, there's no delay in mail. They are saying that those can't be uploaded. So we're working through some kinks. But right now anyone who has a paper bill can go on there and PDF it. If you're on e-billing, it would still be obtained through your mail inbox.
Councillor Guerin?
Through the chair. Yeah, just want to double back on that. Kate, so you're saying that we have to give mandatory 21 days, a, a person has to receive our bill in the mail or, or get an e-bill. Is it 21 days? Is that what you're saying?
Through the chair. Yes, we have to have it postmarked in the mail 21 days prior to the due date. So as long as it is dropped off to the post office 21 days prior to the due date, it doesn't necessarily mean or guaranteed delivery 21 days prior.
Okay. So in councillor, uh, Maguire Blaze's situation where she opened it and it was eight days out, was that, this to councillor Maguire Blaze, was that during that postal strike?
So through the chair, um, when did the bills came out in February? So I received it eight days before it was due. I don't, I, I'm sorry, I don't recall when the due date was, but whenever the due date was for your fall, winter taxes, I received it eight business days prior to that.
Okay. So further that, and is that in this, this ma- um, mandated timeline that on, on, um, municipal governments or is it on anybody? Because I know like my tech savvy, uh, internet bill, I get that it's due 10 days later.
So, so this is prescribed in the municipal act for municipal taxes specifically. Uh, but we take this practice into, uh, most of our bills. We tried to give a 21-day notice period.
Any other questions on this topic? Okay. We will move to our final topic of the night, joining the Shepley Drain to the Dulson Drain, and that's brought forward by councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Um, just, uh, something I wanted to throw out there, be basically, um, like, because the Shepley drain that starts out at the gore as does, uh, part of some of the Dulson Creek. And, uh, Snake Lane and Ferris are really close together, but the water runs in opposite directions. So with, uh, intensification coming at the rate that it is and Harrow being the swamp that's quickly growing into a pond. I just was wondering if this could possibly be a way to help divert some water away from Harrow rather than having it all go into Harrow because by looks to, the way I look at it, as far as our intensification going, it looks to be continuing southward out of Harrow towards the gore. And, uh, pretty much, uh, gonna be contributing even more to the water that's going to be ultimately having to go through Harrow. I just wondering if there's a possibility or even a a chance that we might be able to divert some of it before it does that.
Director Gerard?
Uh, through the chair. Thanks. So, um, so after we received the topic for the committee, the whole, I did meet with my drainage team to take a look at this. Um, so in essence, the, the Dulson and the Shepley are the, in the closest proximity to each other between Snake and Ferris. Um, so when we looked at that, the reason that those watersheds are split is because that's kind of where the high point of the land, uh, like contours. So the Dulson picks up one side of the, the ridge and then the Shepley picks up the other. Um, so from a grading perspective, there's certainly some challenges there. I see, uh, I see the rationale and wanting to redirect water away from Harrow. Uh, however, that small portion of water is like maybe 200 acres of farm property. So it's not a significant amount of water we'd be diverting. Um, so, but in or, in order to do it, if, if council really wanted to do it, you would have to go through the drainage jack process. We would have to do a section 78 improvement. Um, but I would caution you that starting any municipal drainage project is going to impose costs on that watershed. Um, so council does have the authority to start the drainage jack process, but again, like any engineering, any costs associated with it all have cost implications on the people who benefit from those drains. Um, so I would caution against that. Um, the other thing too, is that the, the Dulson itself outlets into a wetland, into a, a restricted outlet. But we also have to be mindful that adding any additional water to the Dulson will require a significant engineering study. Um, what I would say is that from a, from a strategy perspective on trying to address flooding concerns in Harrow, uh, council did, uh, request that administration prepare a report to look at the Richmond Drain. Uh, we've completed that report. It is coming on Tuesday. It is coming to the April 22nd meeting. That'll give you kind of an idea of what is required to address the Richmond. Um, and the strategy just kind of exists for all, like it's all municipal drains. Um, but we looked at the Richmond specifically to give you an update on, on maintenance, the current condition. Um, so it's a fairly comprehensive report. So I, I would say, um, look at that report, uh, digest the information within it. Let us know if you have any questions and I, cause I think that's going to really spell out the process on how to meet, how we would address stormwater in Harrow.
Gerard, any other follow-up questions, comments? It looks like this Tuesday, you'll get more information on the Richmond Drain, which will be very similar. So more to come on that topic. So that ends all the topics for tonight. I want to thank council administration. I mean, good conversations, um, all around, feedback, education. So at this time I will turn it over to director Melandrukolo.
We're going to look for a motion that council receive the report of the presiding officer of the committee of the whole and that council adopt the noted recommendations of the whole being done.
Looking for the mover, Ryan. All right. Moved by councillor Hammond, supported by councillor Allard. I do have one question. The, uh, the flyer on bullying for the chamber and the BIA, does that need to be in a resolution? Or do we need to bring a notice of motion to a regular council meeting?
The chair, in our committees or the whole, we don't bring any notices of motion. So it would have to be either a notice of motion later or something that administration brings to council out on their own.
Thank you.
Recommend it comes back as a notice of motion. Um, we'll work on it now, but I think it also may get more media attention out to the public app.
Thank you. Perhaps councillor Maguire Blaze would like to draft a notice of motion and send it in. Okay. All right. All in, looking for a motion to adjourn now? Is that what I'm at? Okay. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Councillor Allard, Deputy Mayor Shepley, all in favor. Thank you for joining us this evening. Sounds a good one.